... Any public comments? Public comment closed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight's housing, or tonight's study session is about our learning draft Housing Element. We're really fortunate to have Denise Duffy here with us tonight, and she's going to walk us through a presentation that will cover a lot of the significant issues in the Housing Element. And it's online, outside as well, or a copy. So if you don't have a copy, you want one, it's certainly available. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to Denise. Denise, please.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Denise Duffy. With us here from our actual crackin' bush and together with our team at DBNA, we prepared a preliminary draft Housing Element that you have before you is available for the city. Okay, I'll speak up. Tonight's meeting and presentation is really about giving a little bit of information out about what's in the Housing Element and what the next steps are. It's about gathering any comments, particularly from the public and the council regarding any policies in particular. The process for Housing Element is one that requires active public participation, and so we are essentially on our second full workshop with the council. And we also gave a presentation at the public visioning session that the council had. So our expectation is after this workshop, we will also be having to have a Housing Element before the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission is the body that directs the House of Representatives to HCD. And then once HCD has a 60-day review of the Housing Element, that this Housing Element will also be available for 60 more days, once it's submitted for public review by written comments and comments from the council or whoever. And after that time, the Housing Element, we receive all the written comments from the Housing Element, HCD and any public members that wish to comment. And then we prepare revised draft Housing Element to bring back to both the Planning Commission and the council for adoption, for consideration of adoption, or consideration of what you want to do with that document. So I think that gives you a little bit of a framework. I wanted to let you know that we're hoping to get as much public comment tonight. At the same time, there's always going to be a lot of opportunity in the future. We know this document just came out last week. So last time we were here, we sort of gave a background presentation and identified that Housing and Community Development in the state is the agency that manages the Housing Element process for all jurisdictions and housing elements are required state law to be adopted. If you don't have a compliant Housing Element, there's a number of different repercussions, including not being available for state funding, et cetera. This is what you might want to explore.
Is it 120 days, 60 to 60 before the draft gets back to the Planning Commission?
No, I...
Or a concurrent system? I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
No problem. So I'm going to leave your questions from the audience, and then I'm going to do my presentation, and that's where we can get through it.
Sure.
And if you can, the rest of you just hold questions, but I want to answer them. And it's a 60-day process, so actually, then 60 days, then you can go back and have more public review, because it'll be before the Planning Commission and the council, once adopted, 90. Complicated, but then HCD has 90 days to do the final, final Housing Element. So this is a number of different processes. The point is, public outreach is one of them, a critical component. Thanks, I'll answer that question, and I'll go on on the rest of this. The, you know, before you, this is the, this is the document. It's rather long, it's very factual, and it is really about getting information to the city about what the city's background is, employment trends, inventory, population, and identifying from that what you need to do in terms of housing, provide housing for the regional housing needs assessment, and providing housing for low-income people. And as we talked, discussed that last time, this is all laid out in this preliminary draft document. Our point today is to go through some of these specifics. I'm not going to go through the entire document and give all the background on it, because it's here for you to read, and hoping that anyone had any comments, submit them in writing so that we can gather them all, you know, changes, corrections, we love them, thoughts. So today, we're going to go through a little bit of the background of the Housing Elements, and talk about a little bit about the policies, that are the key policies and programs within the Housing Element that are required by the state law, and then open up for any public comments and discuss next steps. The law requires us to, we have to, as governments, we have to plan for not just our existing, but our projected housing needs. And really, the focus from HCD, the Housing and Community Development, and strong focus of the state and our governor, is to have a Housing Element that allows and meets the needs of all economic segments of the community, as we talked about our last meeting. Must be reviewed by HCD, for public housing development, and public outreach is a required component. I wanted to give a brief background in some of these trends and some of these population numbers that really are documented. I think if anyone picks up or goes on the website and looks at the document, there's just a lot of tables, there's a lot of information. It comes from a variety of sources, a lot of the 2010 population census data. We get, and we get the package from HCD of information, we get our own research, there's AMAG, Regional Housing Forecast. It's a myriad of different sources, and sometimes these sources aren't exactly jiving specifically together. If you see something like that, you should probably explain it in the footnote to let us know. We did a lot of our own research too, to create the correct demographic profile for your city. It's really developing the community profile. What is our city about now, so we can project needs from the future and decide what kind of policies to implement to meet special needs of the city and to meet housing state law. So there's actually, AMAG's actually projecting a major increase over the existing population, which is, you know, it's quite an increase considering that the population's been relatively static over the last, you know, 30 years. So, you know, we know, it's a projection from AMAG Association of Local Area Governments, that's one thing they've projected. I think what's interesting here is really the population that's really stayed relatively stable, you know, it's sort of consistent with the small community that you have in closing it. The population age is also interesting. There's an aging population, there's a number of renters and elderly that are part of the 35 to 64-year age group, and in 10 years, they'll be, you know, 65 and 10 moving into the more elderly classification. What that means in terms of Housing Element provisions is that the city wants to, the state would like you to consider one of the special needs of your housing and your elderly population. And there's approximately 149 owner-occupied households aged 65 or older, and 22, do you have an aging population? And some of that means there's more needs for future services, et cetera. Employment trends, again, AMAG forecasts a large employment increase. They already not happened, but it's easy to note what the employment has been also fairly stable over the last, the last Housing Element. Right now, there's 59 homes of sufficient housing to be deployed, and the thin city projection of 371 in 2020, and then a large jump in the next 35 years. What AMAG and the HCD want us to say is, okay, we have to plan for that specific amount of employment, but we need to understand whether that's forecast or not. The, also, the Housing Element provides a breakdown of housing by high, global family detached, local family, mobile homes, et cetera. So, you know, again, the stability of our housing units hasn't changed very much over the years. Our housing stock, what's important to understand is that we have a fairly aging housing stock. Most of the units that we have in Del Rio's haven't built until 30 years ago. Interestingly enough, in comparison to the city of Monterrey's, the Los Feliz side, we have a much higher percentage of housing units built, or built after, or a little bit closer than that, after 69, after 1969, nearly 28 percent. Monterrey has 47 percent. So we, like our other sister area jurisdictions, have an aging housing stock. And that's something that people want to consider, the city they want to consider in terms of rehab and things like that. It's one of the housing focuses on the policy. This is what we discussed last time, the regional housing needs assessment, it's an allocation from HCD that we, as a city, need to plan for, a certain percentage of low, moderate income units over the next planning cycle. So this doesn't mean that the housing units, we have to build them, that means, but it means we have to have a location for them and plan for them to understand that this is the number of unmet housing needs that the city needs to plan for and provide for its policies. The fifth cycle, we're currently in the fifth cycle of Housing Element, as I discussed last time. The Housing Element from the city of Del Rio's started in the 1990s, so we are having to catch up in our, in our cycle allocation. So not only do we have to plan for our fifth cycle allocation of 27 housing units of the very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, but we also have to add to that the fourth cycle allocation of about 59 low and very low moderate units to be planned for and by the next housing cycle. The other element that, in the Housing Element, when we, when we talk about the planning for these needs, what they mean is, are there available lands to place these units? Is there services, are there services to provide for these units? Is there water to serve these? Where is the area, if there's zoning that's available to be able to build these units? So that's what they want to make sure, HCD wants to make sure you show them, you have a, you have an available area, formal order, for instance. We have water, water allocation from formal order. We have the zoning, whether or not we can zone at a certain density to provide for those total number of units over the time. The categories that they ask us to look at too, is really looking at the statistics, the first part of the report. Then the second part of the report really talks about, well, where are your special housing needs? What are the groups of people that we've considered to be special housing needs? And HCD gives us the areas that they would consider special housing needs, whether they're elderly, as you can imagine, people with disabilities, overcrowded households with large families, planning for single parents who tend to have a more struggle with finding housing, and of course, homeless. So in our area, there's also, HCD requires formal orders, but as we said in the report first, there will be no formal housing, no formal, and zoning requirement. Each of the sections prior to this Housing Element bring us to an evaluation of policies and programs. And the HCD is very specific in terms of what required goals we need to have as in our Housing Element. And they face, we have to address the issues of housing opportunities, affordable housing, removing these grants to housing, equal housing opportunities, all of the housing opportunities. So those are generally the goals that they provide in a specific worksheet that we say we have to comply with, and that's where the policies and programs that we've developed are very specific to those. There are, the, the, chapter seven of our document talks about housing programs and policies. The, each of them has an overriding goal, like we would in the general plan, you look at the vision first, and then you identify how you achieve that vision with the policy, and then a program is how we specifically, what you want to get done by when. And that's the requirement of HCD to develop it that way. So in this, this next set of slides, it's just an overview of our Housing Element, major goals and policies. The document itself has chapter seven, which is 14 pages of these. And, you know, that's the whole we're here for tonight. Part of the, the last meeting we attended, we had a number of speakers, we had a number of council members, and they provided a lot of input in terms of, here's what we'd like to see in the city, we want to see development in formal order of housing available for low-income housing, we'd like to see some opportunities for different types of lots, and some, how do we deal with water, things like that. So each of these policies do give us some of those elements, because we wanted to give the interest in the public, and show them the right of interest from the public, and plus in other areas. So policy number one is the private adequate sites to build new housing units for all income levels, to meet the city's fair share of housing needs. This is very consistent with one of your older policies, you actually have the old plan, it's also a compliance for them. So our policies are development, develop the underutilized sites whereby you're, you have a site that may be, that is not being utilized, but can be provided housing, that's the form of whatever in the land you literally announce that we give here, and plus in other areas. Providing diversity of housing types to meet your requirements, RHNA, right formal housing, and explore new sources of infrastructure, finance, to be able to provide infrastructures in the areas where housing isn't provided. And again, when we're talking about the amount of housing that's needed for the low and moderate income, it's a total of 70 in the next housing cycle. So it's all of the 29 to 27 from the fifth cycle, and then the major, making up the 70 is the, is what's required under HCD to plan for, provide housing for these levels of all that current purpose. So the, one of the things we talked about last time was an adoption of an inclusion housing ordinance, and there's a couple of people that mentioned that, that's one of the policies on goal B. The goal B is to refer to provisions of a widening housing by location type of unit and crisis needs existing and future needs in the city. It's an overarching, very, you know, common goal, and the policies will be adopted, housing ordinance, inclusion housing ordinance, that for future development, we have a requirement for developers to provide a certain provision of housing in those certain categories, focus on increasing home ownership of housing, provide incentives for affordable housing, and work on policies that provide affordable rents, programs are in the document itself. And then C, works your move governmental and non-governmental constraints to housing development. Governmental constraints are considered anything that's in a zoning ordinance or a zoning code that does not provide, to allow for certain, specific either legal rights under the state law, or does not, or concludes the development of affordable housing. This city really has fairly flexible development standards, and I don't think that we have a, you know, specific problem in any there of the housing, of the development standards that we need to address governmental and non-governmental. So that's in there. There's also a specific policy about, you know, providing some specific language and provisions to, for instance, accessory dwelling unit. We have an accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling unit is now a right by state law, so we want to make sure we're increasing our awareness of all the state laws, and at that same time, as we move through the Housing Element process this year or next, we're making some revisions to the ordinance as to be consistent with state law. So the, again, governmental constraints is zoning, if you will. Non-governmental constraints is something we're all probably very aware of around here, and one of those is, what's a non-governmental constraint? The two major ones for us are water, can't develop an accessory dwelling unit in Del Rio's, we don't have a water permit, water ban in this district, so that's a really good non-governmental constraint. Water, and then the other is funding, you know, some people may not be able to qualify for homes, so home ownership reducing or assisting in any way that the city can, we don't have the control, but those are the two major non-governmental constraints to affordable housing in this area, and pretty much all of them, and so. The final part of the Housing Element, goal B, promote equal housing opportunities for all persons. These are simply coming out of the state law. Fair housing services, reasonable accommodation for anybody with disabilities, after we evaluate our variance request, or we, if someone comes up to the counter of the disability, how do we address, you know, making sure we provide a reasonable accommodation. And then a small community like this, I think it's done naturally, but we got to sort of talk about it later. Housing for seniors, family housing policy, student and single room occupancy housing, SRO housing, occupancy housing is also somewhat of a state law. And policy to support those organizations serving the homeless community that, that we have opposed. And then the goal B, conserve and improve the condition of the existing housing stock for all residents, essentially. And that is not just for affordable housing, but as our, our housing stock is aging and our community is aging, it's important that we maintain quality neighborhoods, and also continue to make sure that the good community housing stock that you have here, which is all fairly well made, actually, is, is continuous. It's a lot of private ownership, you can tell, we want it grounded in the community, and this is a policy that those cities provide to keep that goal up in life in this city. For example, code enforcement, there's a, there's a code enforcement requirement on the city, but that's one of these requirements. And we want to preserve whatever existing quality, single-family housing and rental stock we have in the city, so we don't lose it. You know, we don't want residences that are being rented now to become commercial, for instance, if we have their affordable. And, and of course, sustainable housing design, which is also, you know, was mentioned at the meeting last night. So we just did an overview of essentially what the document talks about and provides in terms of policies and programs. We have, the projects themselves are on, on the website, and they are specific to each of these different categories. And the, again, the goal is of the overview, the goal, the policies are what we want to accomplish. And then HCD requires that, for instance, we say we're going to facilitate housing for all income levels, we have to have an active language, specific program that says, here's how we're going to do it, and what we're going to do by when. And this is really important for the city.
Is this in chapter seven?
Seven, all of it.
I just want to make sure I'm following you.
All on the end of chapter seven. Chapter seven, it goes, goals, housing, policies, and programs. And what we did first is we identified these two goals, and the policies, in the first few pages. And in each of those categories, we just went through, and then we sent it listed, starting on page...
Seven slash five.
Seven slash five, right, each of the different programs that we've identified. Some of them we used from previous programs, or probably from other jurisdictions, but reasonable, some of them are very specific. Make the share of housing, for example, make the regional housing share, first program would be the, who revise his zoning ordinance to allow for adequate housing sites to meet the 70-unit requirement, only consistent for that amount within certain area, consistent with our redevelopment plan. So in other words, what I think needs to be really clear is, this Housing Element is not proposing to do a rezoning for the formal order to allow for any development, specifically up there. Instead, it has an element saying, in the future, put a zoning overlay on there to allow for this specific regional housing needs assessment opportunity site, to be able to say, on these 3.5 acres somewhere in here, I need to have 70 home sites, or 18 of the 350 acres, I need to have 70 newly torn sites. We're not, you want to make sure we're not getting any confusion between what's a future developer's role in terms of housing, but really not related to what's going on in this Housing Element.
So when does that come into play?
Well, we, again, we don't have to, what...
Well, talking about the specifics for our future development, when does that come into play if it doesn't come into play here?
It's not part of the Housing Element role to do that. If, if a developer will come in and wants to put in a proposal for that project, then the city would have an inclusion housing ordinance or an ERNA that says you have to provide this amount of housing or building on this location. What we need to do in this Housing Element is simply say, here's where it's going to be located, and one constraint, or one opportunity to remove, that is, there's no housing allowed currently in order other than under the redevelopment plan. So this program, which part is pretty important, it talks about, consistent with our adopted redevelopment plan, we're going to allow housing up to a certain amount of units that would allow for us to create in the future, meet the needs of the regional housing needs assessment. And that's as far as we've gone here. That, that will get us to what we need to do for this Housing Element.
Yeah, thanks. Just to add, so Mayor, the agreement that the council approved at the last city council meeting will, will set in motion a process to determine with this specific developer precisely what that project may look like on property, and it'll certainly be informed by this.
So overall, here we are, envisioning, here we are, goals, policies in our Housing Element, and here we are, moving towards adopting of this with public input to allow them to meet the regional housing needs. Over here, in this other box, is the process whereby there is going to be a future developer, if there's a disletting somewhere in the future, one of those people according to our Housing Element goals and policies would be required to develop affordable housing on the formal order, consistent with what the public has talked about in our workshops and what's been planned every so. Actually, I thought that was important, Mr. Overview, and other than that, are really just available to hear from the public, if anyone has had a chance to read this by an argument, and wants to weigh in on the policies and the programs, or has a policy or program that they think is important, then that's what we're here for, we're here to take public input and to be able to talk at the end about our next steps.
Okay, so you want to, you're ready for a public comment?
Yes, or a public comment, whichever you want to.
Well, let's start with council.
Sure.
Let's start with council comments.
I, I kind of have, this is, I'm going out there, so just kind of follow me, but there's some people that have made rentals on their homes, maybe legal or illegal. If there was some type of amnesty program where those people could come forward, and would those be, could those be used as part of this Housing Element? As far as satisfying some of these little things that we have to satisfy? And, and, and the other thing I thought, wasn't there a thing about when you want to have a granny unit? Is there, what's the whole granny unit thing?
It is auxiliary dwelling unit.
Right.
Accessories.
Accessories. So people...
No water.
So we could...
Yeah, you have to have water.
Well, you have to have water. Well, you have to have water for all these other people that are doing it illegally too. So I don't know how to address that, but if there's some way, you know, we could kind of go down that road and see what's legal and illegal.
Right, I do understand what you're saying. And one of the policies we're working on here is to adopt and update the accessory dwelling and ordinance in this next year or so, which would be one, to make it compliant with state law, and also to recognize that the state basically is saying, if you have an accessory dwelling unit, you know, in a permitted building area already, you have that by right, in other words, you don't need to go get a permit for it. So I think it's very important that the city updates its auxiliary unit ordinance, makes it consistent with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, because otherwise, if you don't have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, we just follow it up the state, so that's the real one. So in that context, that's where that would come in, the city would look... The city would look at, well, would you like to put up an amnesty program as you develop your ATU ordinance to be over and above what the state does? And, you know, that would be something that, there's a number of different ordinance that it's going to come back to, and I'll make a deliberation on each of those in terms of language. It's not that difficult because the state actually provides sample ordinances for each jurisdiction, they're all required state programs, but in the context.
Any other comments?
I have a number, I'm questioning some of the numbers. A little housing inventory by type, particularly table two dash nine and two dash twenty-five. I'm not sure how the condominiums are counted, whether they're considered, are they an attached unit, are they considered a multifamily unit? But regardless, they don't appear to be reflected in those numbers.
And I think two point nine talks about land construction, land units for construction?
No, that is the current inventory, the housing inventory, 2000 to 2010. Two twenty-five is the housing stock by year of construction.
So the 2010 numbers are from the US Census, so that's our state department. We will, you know, take an opportunity to check out those tables and obviously we won't respond to every answer tonight. But this is an opportunity, if there's any other corrections or things like that, we ask that the public provide them, the RINB will transmit them and I will get a list that will make sure that before we send it to the state.
But just for clarification, what, how is the condominiums considered? Are they considered a single family?
No, it depends on how HCD, what HCD program they give us. So they gave us an Excel spreadsheet that we looked at the general research, with about 20 different tables, and that's part of the housing stock. I'm not going to talk about condominiums, I'm not going to talk about, they don't talk about condominiums. So it is a little bit different, you can't deny something that's a new one in the information that we provided.
Okay, and then, let me see. C dash one dash, C dot one dash dot three, mitigating constraints, it's seven, that eliminated limits on the number of persons allowed to live in housing unit defined under definition of family.
Currently, the definition of family, the current zoning ordinance is outside state law. So this, there's a number of different programs that require, the definition of family is one of them, I think you sent it around, they'll know if it's under the definition of family. So that goes to the fact that we need to update the zoning ordinance to be consistent with the targets of what the definition of house is. It's too narrowly defined and there's a lot of jurisdictions that have an older element, other than the zoning ordinance that have the same issue.
That's right, yeah. It's state and federal law.
Okay, I understand, but, you know, it was just, I guess my concern is the elimination of number of persons allowed to live in housing. I mean, obviously, there have to be some, just for safety reasons, safety reasons, and there's got to be some of that.
Yes, I think this is saying amend zoning ordinance to eliminate limits on number of persons allowed to live in housing unit under definition of family, but I think you would still have, you know, the fire marshal and other things like that, the health and safety requirements. So that's specific to definition of family.
And again, just to point out that this document, the adoption of the document does not specify the language. It's an overview and we'll have, council will be able to review as the planning commission will, the ordinance first, and then see it at the council level and work out whatever language, just in law, in the state.
And my last clarification, I guess, I asked for is page four dash eighteen, under unexcluded ordinance. The state of California is in the process of approving the transfer of the site to the city of Delros for all these except single family housing. That's kind of contrary to what you said that we use. Four down, eighteen.
We'll check that language to make sure that it's current, that it's sitting down here in the... Thank you. Thanks.
Does that tell?
Yes, Kristen, when you were making reference to...
Microphone, please.
Oh, thank you. Kristen, when you were making reference to the rentals and so on, were you including the Airbnb or the short-term rentals?
No.
No, okay. How do we address that in the housing?
Well, actually, the HCD does want to know what type of short-term rental ordinances that you have, because they're concerned whether or not the people will be buying housing stock in order to just provide housing for short-term rentals and then therefore reduce or take away existing housing stock. So if that is a concern in the city, that there's a need for it, that we can create a policy for it, we can suggest a review of the short-term rental housing ordinance, or if that's an additional program, we can research that or policy.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, maybe parents, like, how many rentals do we have? How many short-term?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Any other questions?
Yep. So the one question is, is just the plan is where the meat of this whole thing, and the, I guess, what gives me most pause when I read these, when I read these programs and the policies that are in there is, is there doesn't seem to be any account for baseline. There, you know, the city shall adopt policies that encourage equal opportunity housing and facilitate that, but what are we doing today that doesn't do that now? And how is that recognized?
Because we don't have a housing element now, that's probably why we have to put these in, plus there are also mandated policies by HCD. So this will give us the opportunity...
This would become our baseline?
That's our baseline. And then the other thing is it's an annual review of the annual planning review, and also sort of a check-in spot the next time we prepare or update housing, which we have to also immediately go to the next version. We can say what we do have and what we've done. And so that's really exactly what housing elements in HCD want you to do, they want you to get these policies in and then report on progress.
Okay.
And how we meet the goals.
Okay, and then much of the language, you know, as it goes from goal to, it goes from structures, goal to policy, then to program? The goals are written with will, all the policies are written, for the most part, as shall. Is this, is this state mandated, or is this, do we have some discretion in what shall and what will be done?
Well, no, I have to look at that.
Okay. Because it's, I mean, just one, one that jumped out, yeah, right, one that jumped out to me was E11.
E11?
Yeah. Shall provide grants, low interest loans, forgivable loans for violation codes, repairs, safety issues and modifications to accommodate. That just, that just opens us up to, you know, to a number of different things. You know, if we, if we come across a home that's of extremely low income residents, there are code violations within that home, we, you know, we cite it because we have to do that for safety concerns. This right here then says, well, you city, you're now on the hook to, shall provide these means for them to then rectify that or forgive code violations.
And if this...
Well, but it says shall investigate, it doesn't say shall provide.
No, it says shall provide, specifically.
That's not being considered as available. So if you can work with, you know, revision to that language?
Yeah, just in, as a whole, I mean, well, what's the opportunity for us to kind of go in and wordsmith some of this stuff prior to it going to HCD? Because I, I mean, this, I understand, is a highly regulated document, and sometimes you just have to write stuff the way you write it.
And I think overall, the goals were written with will and the programs were written with shall.
Yeah, right.
And that's pretty consistent with, you know, a lot of the housing elements and the way they've been written, but we definitely, we should definitely look at that language as well. And I think the back E11 that you guys pointed out, I think we should definitely take a look at that one, for sure. That's a valid provide, that's a language that is a little bit more than maybe that the city can do.
Oh, there's a lot, I mean, there's a number of things like that.
But to go back to your other point, the programs have to say shall, because the programs have to show that they can be implementable, that they have to show objectives and a timeframe. So if we don't, if we make it a maybe kind of a document, it's not going to be acceptable. And it also is, a number of these are consistent with having to do something that's required in which they're wrong. The ones that you pointed out isn't, so I think that's where we have limited language.
How about then on D14? This one is the identification of emergency and transitional shelters? That's required, okay. So, I mean, again, that's one of these things where, I guess we've got the old city hall that would about, I mean, that's about all I can think of, that we would be able to, you know, to participate in that.
Well, I mean, I think the requirement under the homelessness, the precise for emergency transitional shelters, and then to make zoning changes if needed to provide for this, to allow for these shelters, consistent with state law, is kind of what it says, but...
Denise, by may, I mean, as I understand the law as it's evolving on this one, until we do this, the entire city is fair game. So until we, anywhere.
Yeah.
They can walk in, there's plans, we want to put a homeless shelter in your park, and we're, we're pretty bound. So what this, this is, believe it or not, this is actually giving us more control than we currently have. The other point I want to make, just because this is a great discussion about sort of, there's a tension here between mandated state programs and policies and our means and desire, frankly, to do certain things, right? And we've already been discussing with Denise how we can push out the, at least the timeframe by which certain ordinances will be required, certain policies will be required to be implemented. Now, we, in our discussion with them, and we've gotten what we want in here. We're fully ready for the state to come back and say, I'm sorry, push it back. So we're going to, I just want to kind of raise that to council and for the public right now, is that this is going to be a process with HCD. And we're already trying to give the city as much latitude as possible in terms of implementation.
Okay, so then, my concerns, they're on your radars. Got it.
And I think we still have an opportunity for, for being a city manager to relook, you have to review about some of the dates for implementation, and I can be welcome to that, because it's really a part of what we think you can do by when, it's a small city, and I think we can say with HCD, we can all do so much in terms of implementation of these programs by a certain period of time, there's a lot that has to be done. So I think there's a way in terms of when we have to be done with the ones in state law.
How does vacancy rate help us or hurt us with arena number? And quite honestly, I think arena number is pretty reasonable, but if we have a low, if we have a biased and high vacancy rate, how does that then affect arena number?
Well, I think that the vacancy rate is what it is, but if you have a solid vacancy rate that's reasonable, like the city of Monterey, or I think in this document we talked about, section where it talks about that our vacancy rate is rather healthy. It's not bad or good, but if you have a very low vacancy rate, that's, HCD looks at that and says, well, then you don't have opportunity to, you know, you have a, you know, overcrowding, you have other issues that you have to deal with. Because we have a more specific vacancy rate, that's more in the reasonable range, you know, we're not going to be looked at as, oh, you have to do more, then we need to do...
So that's, okay, that's the right answer, I guess that's a good answer.
The knowledge that you're helping us with our arena number, basically, the arena numbers are what they are, it just shows we want to be able to prove, yes, we can, you know, we have the ability to, not that we have to, but we have the ability to make this, these lands available to affordable housing within the timeframe of the land, we have the services, we can meet the numbers you have to show, we can meet the numbers, not, not extract or...
Right, but there were four, there are four inputs to that, to that arena calculation, and one of, one of them is vacancy, and I forget the other.
Well, I think those are developed by M Bay.
And that's where that comes from?
So the questions really come to M Bay, and I think the question goes to M Bay in terms of how we can work it out, and we can try that, it's not going to change, we don't have to.
And that's, that's the answer, that's the good answer. On page sixty-six, the construction costs, this 2015 number of $350 a square foot, I mean, Commissioner Halps out there, that's severely underneath what, right now, the blended rate's about 650, and a home and bath is 750 per square foot? That's a number from February 2019.
Where are you looking?
Page sixty-six under construction, construction costs.
We don't have page sixty-six, what, sixty-six?
I will find.
Chapter, chapter page, please.
I recognize where that came from, and we can update for new housing, if you give us a big source, we use the number that we provide in the city of Monterey, because we didn't have, you know, we haven't, we didn't have, we can't get from Delros, there just isn't that much available information.
Okay. On the contact list, Kara Abrams left the city.
And that's great.
Okay. I'm just, I just read this.
No, I think at this point, if we want to provide common center correction, things like that, given our timeframe and that we have a public eye, we want to make sure we're looking at the big picture, and we will get whatever changes, direction, things like that, policies are where we want to focus on.
Sure. Yeah, and if I could just jump in there, if council can please just send me in writing any of these changes, we'll make sure we collate them and we'll get them to the DDA team and get them, get them fixed.
All right, I apologize if I've misunderstood what the, what the goal of this evening was. I mean, this was a study session, you know, so...
Yeah, so no, your questions are all really, really helpful and good, I just want to make sure I have a part to update, and I'll have to leave them on, make sure I get to them.
I'll do that.
So we're soliciting more of your comments on, you know, you know, anything that you see that has lacked or direction, provide them in writing something that's substantive that would form the issues, would like to talk to you, then let me know.
All right.
How is it determined who will be on the city address list?
For the notices for this documentation and for this, what we try to do is follow the guidelines created in HCD, it's basically trying to reach out to everybody that's normally on the city contact list, and then extending that to developers or disadvantaged communities, homeless shelters, anyone who would be normally a part of providing affordable housing or services for, for living in person. Shelters, all those big places we do, we put in our list as extensive as we can, and the city will be doing that for each of the, of the things. And if there's people on this list that are out of law or prepared, because we just sort of tried to get every list together we could, and the point that us put in as an appendix is to show, you know, we sent this out to all, you know, everybody we can think of.
After public comment, we'll come back and I'll see if there's any other unanswered questions, but I'm conscious of you wanting to get as much public time as possible. I just, I just want to say one thing going out. So this is the end of the fifth cycle as of December 31st, 2019, and then on January 1st, we start the sixth cycle. So we start this process all over again, but this is the first time we've had one since 97?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. So this is... Ninety-two. So this is, um, a huge step forward for us, but we're gonna have to start working on it again like Lickety Split. So, um, on that, um, I want to open it up to the public. Questions, comments?
Hey SWAT, uh, here, here, I, I'll give you a couple of quick ones. Uh, we'll come at the twenty thirty population stuff, but I was just kind of curious, twenty twenty, was it nineteen twenty-five? We didn't hear that in six months, but, oh, that was kind of interesting. Um, I don't think we're in here nineteen, nineteen forty-five. Um, I think you managed this, but I was just, as we reconsidered, how all the policies, uh, plus having, you know, stuff like finding money for infrastructure. Well, I guess the idea there is that through, uh, ordinances and things like that, uh, zoning plans, you know, kind of, is that for?
It's even in the language program.
But that's the sorts of places that the details have been fleshed out at.
Yes.
Right, okay, all right. Uh, council, Bill, let's answer, ask my question upstairs. Uh, next year, fifteen, is that fifteen full-time rentals or let the people who like go away for a week and then, and do that every so often?
I believe it's everything we have, isn't it?
It's everything we have, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
We don't probably have fifteen. Yeah, it's a man. Oh, I was curious, that was kind of weird, I thought. Um, do we have any opportunity to partner, like we were talking about with homeless shelter, what that potentially might be in the city? Can we satisfy any of that with a partner with another city? I don't, it'd be impossible, or you have to write something in your boundaries that's, that satisfies it?
I think that's a great question. I want to look into that more with Alex and Dino. Because if there isn't a good land or spot of the animal, maybe it's a bill, but I, I don't have the answer.
Okay, I was curious, I mean, for a time, obviously, you brought, you know, obvious, the obvious point, we don't have a lot of space. We may, we will eventually afford it. Okay, uh, the lead that Bill, I mentioned, is that, I remember, that's someone else's or what?
I'm, I'm writing a question down.
Okay, okay, all right, I was just curious, uh, yeah, who says that, uh, the director of centers, that's what we'll look at. All right, thank you. Do you recall that?
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll let Dino know.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlie Patsyface. I'm sorry, please, I don't know all this stuff. So, um, I'm just wondering, are we able to meet our HCD code data by just sitting at our four-door land? And, um, so obviously, building that land that we own, and can we meet that with just four-door, I guess is one question. We also need to incorporate, um, building on sub-teen acres. I'm also curious if there's any partnership we can do with businesses so we can have priority fill instead of having to build on new land? If we could procure with other businesses about like, you know, building housing above their current buildings, to see if we can provide housing that way. Um, I'm wondering if we have to go into like Work Memorial Park, I can't think of any other spaces that we have. I'm just wondering if that's something that's concerned, if we have to look into that?
No.
No?
Okay.
Uh, yeah, that's funny.
Hi, I just have a couple of random thoughts.
Can you tell us who you are, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Kirjenza Roseroe. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just random thoughts, because I'm new to this housing element, uh, city. One is, are there any nonprofits who would be interested, who are involved in housing? For the less fortunate, that we could somehow bring on board and assist with that piece of it? Um, some of those people have grants and have funds and have their own fundraising efforts. Um, I guess I'm also not clear on, all of this has to do with the land that we now have as part of the fora? So this is, and then anything that we do that is, I don't think there, I don't think there are any vacant lots within Delray Oaks, correct? Every hat, there's either a house or a condo or, so basically, we're talking, am I correct? Am I understanding that?
There's one.
This is all.
So, so there's two pieces of four-door property. There is the seventeen acres and there is Work Memorial Park for options. And so Work Memorial Park is right behind Safeway. So, so, so what Denise did was she inventoried all of those in this document and identified any constraints such as wetlands, lack of water, things like that. Um, and then also in that inventory, she looked at all of the lots and anything over eight thousand square feet is eligible to put in an ADU. However, there's no water to put in the ADU. So she identified those and she also, um, described the limits because there's no water for those.
Um, I guess this is all, so the other question is, did I hear something that there's a developer who is, do we only have somebody who's interested in then progressing according to whatever the requirements are mandated that we put in place?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay, is there any information about that? I missed that memo. So is there anything to read about that or do we have any information to share?
So, um, we actually approved a exclusive negotiating deal last, um, council meeting. And so you'll be able to see that information in the packet.
Okay, all right, that's, those are my questions.
Thanks. Any other comments? I'm sorry, more questions? All right, public comment closed. Can I ask mine now?
Right, and may I, do you mind if I answer this question?
Sure, absolutely.
So, in terms of, um, maybe going backwards first, are there any nonprofits to assist with the funding and planning? Yeah, there's actually a program and a policy about that to work with nonprofits to help facilitate housing in different programs. And there's an appendices in the back of the document that talks about what the different nonprofits are. Um, so, and again, just to be clear, it's not that we have to develop this, it's that these would be something that you would work with these different nonprofits in order to, you know, remove any constraints to develop affordable housing or to see if there are any opportunities once a site has been determined. Um, can we meet the, the regional housing needs requirement with just four-door? Absolutely, we can. Because the, we kind of know, it talks about that as the most reasonable, realistic site that could be built at this time and live out a lot of constraints and all the other sites that you mentioned, although they're listed as open, um, reviewed them. They really have many different strengths to develop on them. Um, so we, um, and then are there, take the grant for the one vacant lot in Delray Oaks? The redevelopment question, it's really an important question. There is a redevelopment plan that was adopted by the city when there was redevelopment agency in the city. And the redevelopment plan is available at the city hall, if you want to review it.
That wasn't affected when the, when Brown got the revenue.
So even though the, and Alex, our city attorney can answer this more eloquently, but even though you have, um, a redevelopment agency, redevelopment law agencies are no longer in place, as I understand, the adoption of the redevelopment plan with the assignment of up to two hundred units of the, of the former four-door is something that stays on the books and we have a more consistency with creation to that, for that amount.
I believe that's correct.
If there are any questions that I forgot, I'll answer.
Just curious about, um, working with businesses to, to have sort of additional housing onto the plan that we don't necessarily own, but we can partner with them.
I think there was a policy there about, as we heard the last time, without, um, commercial residential on top. And there's a policy and a program to explore that. And a lot of these, I think, taken here from mentioning this is fourth cycle or fifth cycle, now we're going into the sixth cycle. So there may be things that we won't get into this, what our HCD, um, staff member of HCD has said, you have to get what you can get done in this one because you need, you have to get perm this and you have to get set in, um, put the document in. And then you have the opportunity for next year to make some changes to it. The other thing that was very encouraging too, because a lot of the discussion last time was about, well, what funding can we do, can we get for two, two housing elements? More of the funding. And they have funding available now. If we have our housing element in the HCD, um, our, our potential for grants is actually very good. Um, so I am encouraging us to move on this proportion when we can, when everyone feels comfortable with it. And then let's see if the city can receive some grants for the next proportion, because they actually also do grants for some amendments updates too.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, so on the parcel map, there is, um, a chunk of land on the corner of South Boundary and General Gym. And there are maps I have seen that divide that, um, at about a third, so one section is two-thirds, the other section is one-third. I don't see that on these, but I know that you have had, you've been around here long enough. Are those all, um, uh, regional parks?
So are you talking about the South Boundary Road and, um, and?
So it's, um, uh, this page?
Okay. Some exhibits?
Can you see that right there?
Yeah.
And then, but all of the other maps just show it as one? I'm just curious as to the status of that and why some maps show it one way and others don't?
So, um, Exhibit A, Exhibit A, the ten parcel map and appendix?
Yes, yeah, appendix B.
Yeah, appendix B. So, uh, the, are you talking about the areas south, south of the area?
Correct.
Those actually are correct down, down below what it's like, because I think it's the, um, it's, it's the area that, that went in the history of, you know, four, four-door and everything and more, and tell us more, and students, it wouldn't really be called here.
Right.
There was a certain component of it that had been traded away, it was the PropCon site. And then a certain part got taken off of that PropCon site and there was a trade. So, um, all I can tell you is, this is a, it may not be the specific map, this is a general purpose already. But, um, I'm sure we can get you more information as to exactly what the partials are.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But also they're not developable, obviously, if they're consistently in the PropCon.
I just want to be clear who owns that piece.
Uh, regional parks district.
Okay, so they own the two pieces south of South Boundary. Gotcha. Okay. Um, and I just want to let everybody know, the name of our creek is Arroyo Del Rey. Did you know that? Arroyo Del Rey. Um, uh, Work Memorial, um, and my question is more kind of process. I've never gone through a housing element process. So, um, things like our current density, it shows sixteen to eighteen per acre. How do we change that? When do we change that?
That's a really good question. The, the adoption of this housing element once it happens, um, just the next steps here, doesn't do anything to your zoning limits. What has to happen after that, or what you could choose to do after that is bring the different ordinances back. One would be the zoning ordinance that would work, you know, that would identify a different density from the design D district. And, and actually, your D district has some kind of leading language that you clarify with the D district line and the zoning. Each of these items that talk about, that have an adoption of a ordinance or a change in policy, adoption of an ordinance specifically, would again, from happening to go back after the adoption of this housing element and after HCD reviews it, it would be in a twenty-twenty period of time. And it would go through your staff up to planning commission and city council. So you probably have kind of a working session at some point about which elements of these you want to work on first. And, um, that will be up to you.
Okay. Um, you know, even though our general plan is really old, it's really solid. You know, um, whoever put it together did, did a really nice job. Um, and so with that kind of in mind, obviously, we all want to be able to stay up to speed on these housing elements from this point forward. But, um, so are there, this housing element, how is it kind of, is it cutting edge? Is it middle of the road? Is it, we're just getting by until next year?
Well, I think it's a, it's a balanced, solid housing element. I think HCD, in each jurisdiction has to present their housing elements, HCD, HCD is very strict in terms of requirements that it has to do. So we'll see what they have to say in terms of, I don't think it's cutting edge. I think that there's elements in there that, that we put in about small law plans and things like that. Um, but it, it, it is catching up in a lot of ways, so, um, we are not, you know, breaking any boundaries here.
Okay, that's next year. Um, and then the only thing, and I can put this in writing, is, um, I just had a meeting with Monterey Bay Community Power today. So that should be included in our energy programs, so.
Yes, I think it should be. If I didn't, I'm sorry.
Uh, I didn't notice it, but. And I think that's about all I have. That's all I have.
I have a closing remarks, if it's okay, and I'll send you other questions and comments. And, um, this is just a quick overview, uh, discussed at the beginning, where we stand right now and what the next steps are. This, um, you answered the sixty-day correction, a little bit again. Right now, we're in the middle of, as we're doing public comments on this preliminary draft housing element. It's, um, still a preliminary draft, even when we send it to HCD, it's a preliminary draft housing element. We're gonna make any changes to this based on what we hear tonight, incorporate public comments and comments and corrections and make a brief comeback from the council. And we're going to either submit to the planning commission a revised version or identify just an errata of what the changes are. And then the planning commission will be considering this in a, in a public hearing, the housing element. They will have an option to provide their own comments. And they may choose to provide comments and changes, in which case we have to go back to you. Or they would, um, suggest that we're ready to submit to HCD with, as a preliminary draft, with these changes incorporated. Once we submit to HCD, then there is the required sixty-day public review period and the sixty-day public review period. At the same time, concurrent, we're all, all of our, in all public, as well as after when HCD reviews the document. Um, after that, we'll get comments from the public and from HCD, and we'll come back to the planning commission, help the council with what the comments are and what our suggested revisions are, or just the comments and changes are reasonable enough, we'll just make the changes and have to take a look at them. Um, then the planning commission and council, in terms of whether or not they wish to adopt the housing element. This is very important. They can choose to consider and accept all of HCD comments and adopt with HCD comments and all the changes they're gonna ask for, which they will. Or the council has an opportunity to, and the city has an opportunity to adopt the housing element as with the changes that you want to make and then submit the housing element. Um, the difference is you're either gonna get a compliant document if you do everything HCD wants you to do and make exactly the boarding changes they want. And, yeah, after ninety days, they'll say you're compliant because you've done everything you wanted. Or you have the opportunity to not do that, adopt the housing element, you get your document in, and that's entirely fine. They said, I don't want, um, knowing that it began in January, we have to start over again with the housing process. And Alex also had conversations with our, with HCD and, um, fairly clear that there's a pathway in front of us to either of those two.
So will this come to the council at all for action?
Yes.
Oh, it does, okay.
Um, Alex, if you could identify that, the, the action, it will come to be. Um, Alex, if you could identify that, the, the action, it will come to council for action after it goes to the planning commission, is that correct? Once the, once you decide to adopt the document?
Yeah, adoption will happen by, by council.
Okay.
And we're hoping that's sometime in November.
We have a busy fall.
We do.
So, I, I don't think there's any direction that's been requested as part of the workshop, it is a workshop format. But, Alex, is it appropriate to identify what, what, when this goes to the council, in our staff report, I'm sorry, to the planning commission, our staff report to the planning commission, we identify, these are the things that were spoken about, here are the, are the changes, and then the planning commission can then agree to submit on, or direct staff to submit to HCD.
That's right, it'd be akin to the minutes of this meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming, and look at, we're way early, and everybody else for coming and participating, and I hope that we'll be here for the next meeting. All right, we're joined.